Good evening and thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled March 11th School Board meeting. At this time, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you everyone for being here today. Something we don't normally get to do at our March regularly scheduled School Board meeting, but we're very looking forward to doing, is swearing in our very newest School Board member. This is her first regular School Board meeting, Leah Gardner. So before we actually approve our agenda and get into our business meeting portion of tonight, I am going to invite Leah to please stand, raise your right hand, and join me in saying after me your oath of office. I, Leah Gardner--
Aye, Leah Gardner.
Having been elected to the Office of the School Board--
Having been elected to the Office of the School Board--
For independent school district 196--
For independent school district 196--
Do hereby swear--
Do hereby swear--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
And of the state of Minnesota--
And of the state of Minnesota--
And discharge faithfully--
And discharge faithfully--
The duties of the Office of School Board--
The duties of the Office of School Board--
Member to the best of my judgment and ability--
Member to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. It's always fun when we get to start a meeting inviting and swearing in a new School Board member, so thank you for that. At this time, I am going to ask for a motion to approve our agenda. No additions or deletions to our agenda tonight. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Sekoudin and a second by Art. All those in favor of approving the agenda as outlined, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Now we get to move into our next funnest portion of our agenda is our recognition portion. I would like to invite Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Sandra Seder Larson to the podium to introduce us to the second place finisher at state in Alpine Ski.
You're the way we're here, right? Yeah. Good evening Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board and Superintendent Krieger. I am Sandra Seder, Athletics Director and Assistant Principal at Eagan High School. It is my honor and privilege to introduce to you Eagan High School Junior Ms. Courtney Bumpers. This year Courtney earned second place at the MSHSL State Alpine Individual Tournament, and I want to tell you excellence doesn't just happen, it must be earned. It takes such hard work on the part of champion athletes to achieve this level. Hours and hours behind the scenes when no one is watching, these athletes are giving their all and sacrificing other things so that they can focus on becoming their absolute best. The life lessons and skills from this focus and work ethic are going to carry Courtney very far. Here are some stats you might not know about Courtney. She started skiing varsity in the seventh grade. She is a five-year letter winner in Alpine Ski. She is a four-year qualifier in the Minnesota State High School League State Alpine Tournament, so four of five years she has made state. She was the team captain this year and also next year in Alpine Ski. She was a key part, an integral part of our Alpine Ski team making the MSHSL State Tournament in '22 and '23. She is a two-year letter winner in soccer. Her team qualified for the state tournament in soccer this last fall as well, and she is a member of our link crew at Eagan. Courtney's Alpine Ski coaches had this to say about her. On the snow Courtney is beyond gifted. Her ability to attack a course without fear is unmatched. Her body awareness and balance is among the best in the state. Even when the conditions are less than ideal, as was the case for the majority of this season, Courtney is able to excel. As a teammate Courtney's leadership and positivity are infectious. She makes an effort to get to know everyone on the team. Her leadership was recognized by her teammates as they elected her captain for her junior and upcoming senior year. The coaching staff and team are excited to see what Courtney has in store for her senior season. Also, I would like to recognize Courtney's parents who are in the audience tonight, James and Terry. I just want to tell you that we at Eagan are so very proud of Courtney Bumpers. What I love about Courtney is her positive approach to life and her intentional choice to always be a great teammate and lift those around her up. We would like to thank the Board for providing the vision, support, and funding to make these activities possible for our students so that they can be pushed to be their best in what they're passionate about, so thank you. I'll introduce you to Courtney now.
Go ahead and meet the Board. Wonderful, thank you. Next up, I would like to welcome Advisors Janelle Millison and Matt Moore to the podium to introduce us to the Eagan High School State Unified Basketball Champions.
Good evening Board Members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Janelle Millison and I am one of the advisors of the Unified Club. Thank you for taking the time to recognize the Unified Basketball Team. Unified is a movement that allows students with and without intellectual disabilities to participate together in activities sponsored by Special Olympics throughout the school year. Let's take a look at the video.
Playing for a state title inside the Target Center is something any Minnesota high school basketball team shoots for.
Get back, get back, get back! Deal up, deal up!
It's pretty unreal just to be playing in the same place that the Timberwolves play.
Yeah, it was a dream come true.
For the eight teams competing on Thursday, that dream is possible thanks to Special Olympics Unified Basketball, which teams up students with and without intellectual disabilities on the same court.
She's my twin sister.
Connor King decided to join his sister Bria after her first season on Eagan's high school team.
I got involved with Unified because when I came to school, I didn't really like it, and I was still trying to get to know everybody. And then when my twin brother went to a tournament at the Target Center when I was a freshman, he saw how much fun it was and how it made me happy, it made me shine, and he wanted to be a part of it and spend time with me.
Turns out, he's far from the only one who wanted to get in on the fun. Many of Eagan's fans represent just how much the program has expanded at the school.
So there's a Unified Club which I'm a part of, and I took a Unified Gym Class.
I got 33, I got 33! Yo, nice and loud, okay?
Even the coaching staffs are student-led.
Those kids aren't any different than me and all the other peers that would get to play at the Target Center for any other high school team.
And speaking of other teams, this year's tournament, which featured not one but two skilled divisions, shows how big of a deal Unified has become.
I'm coming to watch Nick. Me from Roosevelt High School.
Roosevelt is one of roughly 300 Minnesota schools with Unified programs this year. That's three times the number a few years ago.
I think it's fun, I think it's fun for everybody out here watching.
And for Eagan Coach Carter Will--
We're good, let's go.
Fun doesn't begin to describe it.
It was life-changing. I'm majoring in special education and hopes to come back to Eagan High School in about four years and become a student teacher and eventually become a full-time teacher at Eagan High School and coach football as well.
It changed Bria and Connor's lives too.
We weren't super close, we didn't have the best relationship, and then now Unified has brought us together so much and we're just as close as we've ever been.
And we love playing sports together, that's something that we have in common.
And as of today--
Come on now! Yes sir! Please go!
They also have one more thing in common.
We're three times back to back state champions!
They're now part of a Unified Eagan Basketball Dynasty.
So proud of every one of you! Great job today!
Winning a state championship may have been what they strived for, but doing it in front of this crowd is what makes it special.
The first year, not really people came, and this year we had 450 people come from our school to come support us, and it just really means so much to us. It feels amazing, like I almost want to pinch myself to be like, is this a dream?
1, 2, 3! 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3!
Good evening. I'm Matt Moore, one of the other, well, I'm the other Unified Advisor. Thank you for welcoming this amazing group of students and athletes. And here they come. And I would just like to say to the team, as you guys are walking up here, we are so proud of you, not just for winning, but the way that you did it. Well done. For those who had the pleasure of watching this group of partners and athletes on the court, you saw one of our core values in action, and that value is this: All students of all abilities have something meaningful to contribute to their school and their community. I would like to introduce Brooklyn Evans and Jackie Haas, two of the integral members of the team.
The Unified Team has been fortunate enough to win their third state championship in three years. The students, coaches, members, and the rest of the people involved have worked hard during practice to build relationships and work together as a team for this achievement. During this time, we have not only grown closer as teammates, but have grown closer as friends.
This was my first year as part of the basketball team, and it was so fun to meet new people, be part of the tournament, and play in the championship at Target Center.
So now I'd like to introduce the students who are present today, who are either coaches, managers, or members of our team. So, we have Brooklyn Evans, Jackie Haas, Alex Capitani, Connor King, Bria King, Tab Booker, and Kai Strunk. Also, if any family members that are present, we'd also like for you to stand to be recognized at this time. Finally, thank you to the Board for taking the time to recognize the amazing accomplishments of this team and the inclusion movement that they represent.
Awesome job, thank you so much.
Great job, thanks for being here, awesome job! Thank you so much, congratulations, congratulations! Awesome job, love it! Congratulations! Great job! Congratulations! Fantastic, thank you so much for being here.
Just amazing. Next up, I would like to welcome head coach Taylor Vargis to the podium to introduce us to the Eastview High School State Dance Tournament Third Place Finishers.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Taylor Vargis and I'm the head coach of the Lightning Dance Team at Eastview High School. I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize the student athletes on our team who contributed to a successful year and worked together to uphold the legacy of the Lightning Dance Team. Led by three graduating seniors, the 26 members of the varsity Lightning Dance Team earned the title of Southsboro and Conference Champions in both High Kick Jazz and Kick, the Section 1 AAA Champions in both High Kick and Jazz, and earned the team's first-ever All-Conference Sportsmanship Award. At the state tournament, the team earned third place in class AAA Jazz and third place in class AAA Kick. The team also received the Team Academic All-State Award, ending the season with a team average GPA of 3.68. More than the medals, awards, or accolades they earned and received, this year's team was one of the one that learned lessons of revolving around being coachable athletes, having integrity, and having the kind of drive where you learn to love practice and not just show up for practice. I'm so proud to coach these young women here with me tonight, and I would like to introduce each of them to you now. A quick note that some of our dancers are not able to be here tonight as they are at practice for their other sports, or they have rehearsals for their dance studios that they are part of. Those who are here, please step forward when I call your name. Genevieve Anderson, Riley Benz, Meadow Burke, Adriana Crawford, Isabella Crawford, Jasmine Dwayne, Cooper Dobbs Plan, Lorelei Dunphy, Claire Gertensen, Addison Hedrick, Ainsley Hickock, Kimberly Gerard, Claire Corky, Nicolette Kruger, Peyton Lecker, Gabrielle O'Brien, Aleah Redding, Ashlyn Rustad, Maya Schmidt, Eleanor Ullent, Holly Varner, Abigail Wannas, Julia Warder, Gracie Wold, Ava Wood, and Cassidy Zack. Thank you so much for having us this evening.
Awesome job Coach, fantastic. Congratulations! Congratulations for being here. Great job, you're very welcome. Congratulations, you're welcome. Thanks for coming. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. Just amazing. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for Superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
And, we are proud to celebrate a lot more accomplishments, so let's start off with congratulations to Lucas Gertan of Rosemont High School on winning the one-meter diving championship at the Class 2A Boys Swimming and Diving State Tournament. This is his third consecutive state title, and this year he broke the state record in diving. From Eagan High School, again, congratulations to Owen Kip for placing second, and Stone Larson for placing third in diving at the state tournament. And congratulations to Quinlan Schroder of Rosemont High School, who placed third in the state 100-yard breasto. Congratulations to our Eastview High School Chess Team, who won their second consecutive state title this weekend. Congratulations to our Dakota Hawks Adaptive Floor Hockey Teams, who both advanced to state this past weekend. The CI Team claimed third place in state, and the PI Team won the state title. Congratulations to the eight District 196 High School students who finished in first, second, or third place at the Boys and Girls State Wrestling Tournaments earlier this month. Congratulations to Rosemont High School's Girls Basketball Team on punching their ticket to the Minnesota State High School League State Tournament. Their first game is March 13th at 4:00 PM at Williams Arena. So, yay for our incredible students, and now to our incredible employees. Later this evening, the Board will be asked to approve resolutions designating this week as Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week in District 196. Our cultural family advocates serve as a bridge between school and culturally diverse students and families. They foster academic and social growth, and they provide support for staff on how to meet the unique needs of our students and families. At this time, I would like to ask our cultural family advocates, who we lovingly call CFAs, who are with us this evening, to stand and be recognized. And lastly, I would like to invite Director of Equity and Inclusion Virgil Jones and Director of Finance and Operations Christopher Anyango Rabsha to the podium to introduce two new coordinators to our district.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members and Superintendent Krieger. I'm thrilled to introduce Dr. Alyssa Bartosz. She has accepted the position of Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion. Dr. Bartosz comes to us with an impressive professional journey spanning over 20 years in District 196. She has excelled as a teacher, targeted service coordinator, and elementary assistant administrator in our district. Her wealth of experience and commitment to fostering inclusive environments makes her an ideal fit for our team and the work that we have ahead. We are confident that her expertise, passion, and dedication will greatly contribute to the ongoing efforts in promoting equity and inclusion in District 196. Please join me in extending a warm and enthusiasm welcome to Dr. Alyssa Bartosz in her new role. You want to say a few words?
Thank you very much Virgil. Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members and Superintendent Krieger. It's a great honor to serve as a Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion. I began my career in the Teachers of Color Program in our own district, and I'm proud to have served District 196 in a variety of capacities while engaging in equity work. Looking ahead, I'm eager to collaborate with staff, parents, and students to champion practices that will lead to the best outcomes for students. Thank you.
Good evening Chair Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Krieger, and our public stakeholders. When I think about what we do for transportation as far as getting kids home or bringing them to school, they're the first individuals that our kids see, and they're the last that they see on their way home. So, to take that infrastructure that we have in place, and then find somebody who's caring, whose temperament is just right, to make sure that those bus drivers understand that they have somebody on their corner, is very, very important. We've gone through a whole snow season without having silent phone calls, and so I don't want to jinx it, but I do want to introduce you to Mike Torito, who comes to us with a great wealth of experience. He's managed transportation programs from other school districts across the metro, some of them being our neighbors. Most recently, he was at White Bear Lake. If you remember Tyres, he was one of the managers of Tyres when there was a consortium. So he brings in problem-solving abilities. That smile that is on his face, that calm demeanor, is the kind that I would want all of our kids as they are reaching for the steps of their bus to be experiencing. And so I'm hopeful and expecting that he's going to figure out a way to communicate that and share that with our bus drivers. I am happy to have met Mike through our interview process, and I'm happy that he accepted the position to step into this very critical role for us in the district. So, Mike Torito.
Well, Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Krieger, it's an honor to be here. I came from a school district where I was able to do a lot of new things, new adventures, and build buildings, tackle growth questions when it comes to transportation, and I look forward to the opportunity here to help solve some of those issues that we can recognize in the future, so thank you.
We do not have any special communication requests tonight, so that brings us to our consent agenda portion of the meeting. Board Members, we have 20 items on our consent agenda tonight. They include: The minutes of the February 12th, 2024, regular School Board meeting; the minutes of the February 22nd, 2024, special School Board meeting; the minutes of the February 26th, 2024, special School Board meeting; gifts, quarterly gifts; advertising revenue; quarterly advertising grants; Treasurers Report for January 2024; Schedule of Investments for January 2024; Summary of Claims for January 2024; Revenue and Expenditures Report for January 2024; Purchase of Student iPads Revised; Dakota Ridge School Bid Pack Number One; Agreement with the City of Apple Valley for Use of District Fiber, Carpet, and Other Flooring Replacement Personnel; Pay Rates for Substitute Temporary and Part-Time Employees; Termination and Non-Renewal of Probationary Teachers; and Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week, March 11th through the 15th, 2024. Are there items on the consent agenda that Board Members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Suchin, seconded by Sekoudin. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. We have no items to report today, so that brings us to old business. I would like to invite Steve Trone to the podium to go over the second reading of the proposed changes for the 2024-25 school year calendar.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board and Superintendent Krieger. I'm here this evening to request approval of the proposed changes to the 2024-25 school year calendar. At the February 12th Board Meeting, two changes were presented. The first proposed change is to shift November 11th, 2024, February 18th, 2025, and March 31st, 2025, from student contact days to professional development days. This change supports the district's transition from balanced literacy to structured literacy and supports the teacher training required by the Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act, or READ Act. More than 1,100 teachers will be required to complete 45 hours of structured literacy training over the course of the 2024-25 school year, with completion by July 1, 2025. In addition to the required structured literacy training, elementary teachers will also be engaged in professional development to support new curriculum in literacy, math, and science. Also, all employees will be engaged in other important training in regards to school safety, equity, and collaboration centered on improving student outcomes. As you know, a task force made recommendations for providing time for the required training, while staying within the parameters of the teacher contract and the required number of instructional hours in Minnesota law. The Superintendent's Cabinet also sought additional feedback from parent and teacher leaders, principals, and employee bargaining groups before finalizing the recommended changes. The second proposed change is to eliminate something called kindergarten transition days, August 26th and 27th, 2024, and make September 3rd, 2024, the first day of school for all elementary students K5. These half-day kindergarten transition days were first added to the calendar in 2022-23. The days have proven difficult to staff for transportation, with also a budget cost incurred. In addition, several parents and teachers have expressed that having the first day of school for kindergarten fall on a different day than the rest of the students in elementary and their families can be difficult and not desired. Eliminating the transition days would allow kindergarten families and teachers to be back on the same schedule as other elementary students, and individual meetings during the existing elementary assessment days would be repurposed to support school transition along with some brief assessments for literacy. Again, the proposed calendar changes fall under old business this evening, so I'm requesting Board approval. I thank you for your consideration during this process, and I'm also happy to answer any related questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you very much. This is an action item tonight, but still before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Suchin, seconded by Sekoudin. Thank you. All right, with that, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board Members?
I had a question. When the task force came together and thought about different options, and this is just a question, were absentee days looked at in terms of like the highest absentee days as those being a possible professional development day? Was that part of the conversation? Did that come up at all? I'm just curious.
High absentee days in terms of staff or students?
No, students.
High absentee days in terms of students. One thing that we took into consideration with input from families on the task force was trying to align the three days that were converting, trying to align those two natural breaks that are already in the calendar, so as not to disrupt additional weeks and create additional partial weeks. So that was an intention. Sometimes, I guess to extend your line of questioning, sometimes, I don't have data on this, but sometimes there is a higher level, can be a higher level of student absenteeism on days right after some of the breaks due to family travel plans. I don't have that quantified.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from Board Members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Suchin, seconded by Sekoudin. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much. Next, I would like to welcome or invite Christopher Anyango Rabsha to the podium to go over our 2024-25 capital expenditure budget.
Good evening again Chair Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Krieger, and our public stakeholders. I'm Christopher Anyango Rabsha, and I'm the Director of Finance and Operations, here to discuss our 2024-25 capital budget. I know it feels early, but we're here. Every so often, there are things that we put into place, and all it's setting the stage for what's coming, new. So when we look at what's included in your board packet, three items. So the first one is our operating capital, and I think of this as being new, things that are new coming to the district, long-term facilities, maintenance, replacement, and then new this year because it is critical to our making sure we have sustainability and connectivity across the district is our capital projects levy. So, think new, think replacement, think connections. So these three budget centers come to you typically early in the spring because--
Next, I would like to welcome or invite Christopher Anyango Rabsha to the podium to go over our 2024-25 capital expenditure budget.
Good evening again, Chair Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Krieger, and our public stakeholders. I'm Christopher Anyango Rabsha. I'm the Director of Finance and Operations. I'm here to discuss our 2024-25 capital budget. I know it feels early, but we're here. Every so often, there are things that we put into place, and all it's setting the stage for what's coming new. So when we look at what's included in your board pocket, three items. So the first one is our operating capital, and I think of this as being new, things that are new coming to the district, long-term facilities, maintenance, replacement. And then new this year because it is critical to our making sure we have sustainability and connectivity across the district is our capital projects levy. So think new, think replacement, think connections. So these three budgets come to you typically early in the spring because we want to make sure that we are, there's a long lead time in terms of the purchases that we make. And so then there are processes, bids, that have to be put together and set out to the public prior to them being enacted, which is why we bring these items to the school board early. So in the operating capital, we're anticipating that we will receive state aids of $4 million. There's a levy component of $3 million on the revenue side, and then there's building lease levy of $5.6 million. So together, there are available resources for operating capital of $16 million. We anticipate that we will spend $5.6 million of this to cover our long-term building lease expenses, upgrade several facilities, infrastructure within the district. So this includes purchases of band instruments, purchases of curriculum. Steve Trone just mentioned that we do have READ Act coming, and that's part of implementing new curriculum will be paid for out of here. We are hoping that the state does provide money to pay for the literacy piece, but for the other implementations, science, social studies, those curriculum adoption cycles are included in this budget. Long-term facilities, maintenance, these funds to take care of our facilities, make sure that the infrastructure that our students are engaged in, maintained, taken care of. And so to update and upgrade needed items, we are expecting to receive $4.3 million in state aid. The levy component for LTFM, long-term facilities, maintenance, $7.4 million in the coming year. We are hoping to capture several health and safety-related needs, including building envelope, hardware, equipment that are being upgraded. So when you drive around these buildings in the summer and you see us replacing parking lots, and that LTFM is doing that work. So we anticipate that we will be spending $12 million in expenditures and have a residual fund balance of $2.7 million. Last but not least is our capital projects levy. So early in the consent agenda, the school board accepted a modification for our iPads purchase. So typically, these would be items that we are purchasing now to make sure that we are setting those kits in place. So when students come back in the fall, they have their devices ready to go. So this budget item coming to you early is a way for us to also recognize that there are other components of not just iPads that we will be purchasing in advance of school opening. So we anticipate revenues from levy, primarily for the tech levy, at $8.5 million new coming into the year. And then you can see a list of all those items that we are anticipating purchasing. So hardware, iPads primarily taking the bulk of that, and then also supporting staff resources in the buildings. Also included in the pocket is last year's budget sheet, and this is just provided here for comparison purposes. I am happy to entertain any questions or provide clarification for anything. It is a fast reading. We will be bringing this back to you for action at the April school board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Christopher. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, we will see you on April 8th for the second reading. Thank you very much, Christopher.
Thank you.
Excellent. That brings us to the other action portion of our agenda, and I would like to invite Shelley Munson to the podium to go over our employee group health insurance.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. I bring before you tonight the exhibit on employee group health insurance. The district's had a self-funded arrangement for employee health insurance plan with health partners, providing the stop-loss coverages and the administrative services since July of 2012. State law requires the district to request proposals for these fixed costs every two years, and we went through that process over the last several months. The school district's insurance committee, which is comprised of representatives from our employee groups, went through an extensive review of that. And after reviewing the proposals, the insurance committee unanimously recommends that we continue to contract with health partners to provide administrative services and stop-loss coverages for the next two years. In the 12 years that we've had a self-funded plan, our premium increases have averaged just over 3% a year. However, last year, we had our first double-digit increase since moving to a self-funded plan. Claims have continued to increase significantly, which has included more high-cost claimants and significant pharmacy cost increases. The district's insurance committee has recommended that we set the premium increase at 12% for the 2024-25 plan year. This increase will continue to protect the plan's fiscal integrity and maintain the plan benefits that our employees greatly value. The administration agrees with both recommendations and asks that you approve the exhibit that I've just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
This is an action item tonight, so before we go into the questions, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Art, seconded by Anna. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? I know that this is a quick agenda item to speak through, but there's a lot of information, a lot of number crunching that goes in with that insurance committee. So before we go to approve, I just wanted to extend my thank you on behalf of the board too for all the hours that go into looking at all this data and coming up with a solid recommendation. It's a lot of work with our self-funded plan, so thank you.
Thank you. Our insurance committee spends a lot of time too after the workday going through all of that with us, and we appreciate their input.
Excellent. With that, we have a motion to approve by Art, seconded by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much. Next up, I would love to invite you to stay at the podium, Ms. Munson, to go over our collective bargaining agreement with Rosemont Apple Valley Egan Clerical Association.
Good evening again, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's secretarial and clerical employees. These employees, represented by the Rosemont Apple Valley Egan Clerical Association, ratified the proposed working agreement on March 6th of this year. I'll highlight the terms of the settlement for you. The wage schedule in this agreement was increased by $1 in all steps in all groups each year of the two-year agreement. The longevity pay schedule was increased by 1% each year. The district contributions to health insurance were increased by 7.15% the first year and by 6.25% the second year. The tax-deferred matching plan contributions for full-time employees was increased by $50 in the first year and by $150 in the second year, with part-time employees having an increase in $50 each year. There were other minor language modifications as well as housekeeping updates to the contract. The total of the new costs during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters that you approved. On behalf of the administration, we recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you again. This is another action item, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve?
Motion by Anna, second?
Suchin.
Seconded by Suchin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Excellent. Thank you again for all the work that you've done and the team did on the negotiations team. With that, we have a motion by Anna, seconded by Suchin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. That brings us into our board member and superintendent update portion of the meeting. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share tonight? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay, I just have two comments of gratitude. The first one I want to extend to our Dakota United Educators and the negotiations team. Our teachers and nurses ratified a contract a few weeks ago that brought to the board. And I also want to thank our clerical union, you heard about their agreement tonight, and all of our bargaining groups who have found their way to finding an agreement with the district or tentative agreement. We do not take that for granted, and we just are so appreciative of the collaboration, the dedication to this district by all of our employee groups. We would not be District 196 without all of you working behalf of kids every single day. So we're grateful for that. We're also grateful and would like to welcome our new school board member who has agreed to provide service to District 196. And we're glad that you have a very important stake in this district because you have a child in this district. So thank you for being here, Leah.
Excellent. That brings us to the end of our agenda today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Art and seconded by Leah. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. We are adjourned.